Do we have any? Is he here or online? Eric, you need to unmute yourself. I think you have to do it on your end. Can you hear us in the audience?
Yes. Audience got it.
Eric, is there, I don't know if you can hear us, but you've been moved over. We just need for you to unmute.
Yeah, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay. Are you letting me speak now? I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. So hello, all board members. I'm glad that you've taken the time to give us this platform to speak. And we sent a letter out to all the board members. Ryan Su did that, and I'll just be reading it off again. So this is a letter right here. "We were writing to let you know and make everyone aware of how unfair and inequitable the administrators of the district have been." This is in reference, though, beginning to COVID in March in 2020. "All staff members were clearly sent home to perform their duties while we were in shelter in place." "Approximately after two weeks, our technology department was called back into the district office to offer customer service for all students, staff, and parents." "Our team was working full-time, taking turns coming into the district office to provide public customer support, and while also providing service to our staff from home through Zoom." "Our team did receive a small amount of COVID compensation from March 18 until April 8, 2020." "However, our issue is that we deserve to be additionally compensated for being present and working at the district office from April 2020 until June 2021." "While a majority of the district staff were still working from home, we were obligated to risks ourselves and our families to be present and interact with the public, providing technology customer support." "And in fact, we were practically the only ones present." "We had to manage other duties for other district office departments, including HR and SED." "The biggest quote-unquote slap in the face was from the district compensating or incentivizing teachers to physically return back to work, while our tech team had been present the entire time." "Beginning in November 2020, teachers began holding hybrid classes, and students from a specific class would attend two days per week, while the other half of the classes was home attending via Zoom." "These teachers were compensated an extra several thousand dollars to be present on top of their regular teacher salary." "In April of 2021, after the spring break, teachers were incentivized to come back to work and receive an extra $58 a day on top of their regular salary." "And again, no extra compensation or incentivize was ever offered to our department or any other classified employees who were present." "We can all agree that teachers are essential to the success of our district." "They work hard every day, trying to groom all the children in the community with the time and energy, and in comparison to other community service workers such as police officers and firemen, they probably underappreciate and vastly underpaid." "However, in working with our teachers on a daily basis, we can guarantee that they regard our technology department and all classified staff as essential to their success of being a teacher." "And just to add, just a little personal note on me, I mean, I lived in a family of 11 in the household, so I was putting them at risk the whole time that I was showing up to work."
Yes, it was three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, did he finish? Go ahead, Ryan.
Hi, can you, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Hi, everyone. Thank you to the board and all the administrators for what you do for the district. I'm Ryan Su, one of the senior members of the tech team. I've been here for about 12 years. I just want to follow up on our letter that Eric just shared with everyone. Again, first of all, we're just not trying to compare ourselves to the teachers in any way. We obviously value and appreciate all the hard work and time the teachers put into their jobs and being the focal point of this district. But in order for the teachers and their classroom to be successful, all the other departments in this district has to contribute and provide resources and support as well. So when the shelter-in-place order went into effect, our tech department obviously played a major role in trying to help everyone in this district to function and to continue the learning environment for all of our students. But our team accepted our, our team accepted our role with the shelter-in-place order, and we set up a customer service station here in the boardroom from March of 2020 until August of 2021, which was approximately a year and five months. And throughout this entire period, our team was asking ourselves, "How does our obligation to come back to work and help our students, parents, and staff differ from the teacher's obligation to return to work? Was it worth it for our tech department, food services, and transportation department to fulfill their job duties while risking themselves and their families to interact with the public on a daily basis? And why do teachers need a financial incentive to return back to work while our three departments were present and working the entire time? Shouldn't we be financially compensated or offered the same financial incentive as well? And why were we given the responsibility of other departments in the district office to complete their tasks just because these other departments weren't required to be present? And as Eric mentioned, the SED department and human resources. Would we have been reprimanded if we blatantly refused to do their tasks? And I think if you think about it conversely, if it were the other way around, and let's say human resources, for example, were required to be present during the pandemic, would our tech department ask human resources to help us reset all the Wi-Fi access points in the building if the Wi-Fi was down? So, so I guess from what we've learned so far, from what we understand through the current MOU meetings, the compensation the district is offering to all classified staff, including all the classified staff who were working from home, are five restricted holidays. And once we heard this, which is why our team is speaking tonight and present tonight, is because we just can't comprehend five holidays in comparison to a $58 per day teacher stipend. So we just want-
Maria, you just need to unmute yourself, and then we'll be able to hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, thank you. My name, good evening, board members. My name is Maria Stockton, and I work at Clifford School. I believe I've been working on my 43rd year in this district, and over these years, I've seen big changes in the school district climate. What used to be very positive and enjoyable district to work in, where all members, no matter what positions they were worked in, were respected by everyone to what we have now, with so many classifieds who feel disrespected, that their work is felt as invaluable, and classified employees do not deserve the same consideration as other staffs. I don't believe the feeling is caused by our brothers and sisters in the teaching units, but greatly by administration of the Redwood City School District. What once was a district, if something was doing question, the employee would be asked about the issues, would be discussed and understood, and if needed, behaviors changed to where now administrators simply write up members in disciplinary meetings without discussing the issues first. You just heard how some of our classified employees were dedicated to the union and mandated to work from July all this time, interacting with the public during the COVID time, while others got to stay home. When teachers returned, they got compensation, and they didn't return for a greater workload. They returned to be onsite and received compensation, though their counterparts, instructional assistants, who returned, got nothing. We feel it's disrespectful to the classified unit, and we invite the board members who are over our schools to come and visit and talk to your classified employees. Ask them, do they like working in the district? What can change in this district to make it more positive? And for the board members to turn around and talk to us, instead of going to negotiation and asking for non-cost items and being told that the board members do not want them to happen. We are perplexed at why we are not getting fair and equitable treatment or payment as our counterparts. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Anna Florio, and I'm here because last week, I sent you a letter with a, with an attachment on a lot of signatures from several classified members requesting your support, supporting us in our MOU. As Ryan said, we don't doubt that teachers deserve what they receive for them to come back. But we are also think that we should be as valuable as they are. And we're not asking for $50 a day. We're asking for way less than that, and it's only for the members that were working during that time. So this won't be like a big burden for the district, because it's going to be only for the members that we were called to, and we were told that we were necessary for us to come back to work and be next, and being there for our students and our family and our community. And I think, like I said in my letter, we tire of hearing that we are essential workers, but we are not. We don't feel that we are as valuable as the teachers. As I say, we appreciate my teachers. My teachers were really hard, and I appreciate all of them. But also, we would like to feel that we are considered as valuable as they are. And like I said before, is, we're not asking for $50 a day, like they're received. And I don't think to give us, to offer us only five holiday days, that we can take only two this year and three next year is comparable to what the teacher received. So I will really, really appreciate your support and really show us that we are as valuable as they are. Thank you so much.
Okay, Wendy, you can go ahead and reply. Wendy, hold on.
All ready to go.
Thank you. I wanted, sorry for that technological moment.
We still can't hear Wendy.
It was muted, but now can you hear me? Oh, good.
Still, still can't hear. The RCTSD boardroom is muted.
Oh.
Only thing we heard was the speakers the whole time. We haven't been able to hear you guys.
Test, test. Okay, thank you for your patience, everyone. So I'm Wendy Kelly, Deputy Superintendent, and I would very much like to meet with any classified employee that would like to do so. Please know that our classified employees are really the backbone of the district. I absolutely agree. But there were some misinformation spoken tonight that I would like to clarify. And some of it pertained to negotiations, but I will correct a few things. The RCTA teacher signed an MOU regarding additional work, because the RCTA contract does not allow for overtime. But classified members can absolutely do so. So any type of additional work that was done during the pandemic was paid overtime, and we checked. So once again, there were a few misinformation that was given tonight, and I'd be happy to meet with anyone tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I didn't hear my name called. My name is Johanna Rasmussen, and I am the mother of a fourth grader who had been attending Roosevelt School until last Tuesday, after he was assaulted for the third time. A little over a month ago, my husband and I drafted up a safety plan that the school administration and staff signed off on and agreed to supervise our son during recess and lunch. Sadly, even after going through extraordinary lengths to ensure our son's safety at school, he was surrounded by a group of children who forced him onto his knees on the ground on the playground under the threat of and fear that they would hurt him if he did not do so. We know that bullying is a longstanding issue at Roosevelt School. There's even been litigation on this matter. Children have a right to be and feel safe at school. The situation at Roosevelt, the bullying issue is escalating. It's serious, and it's harming children. No child should have to endure the trauma my son has been subjected to over the last several months. I am asking you, please, to intervene and to do something about the egregious bullying and the violence that's taking place on the playground at Roosevelt School. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Dr. Baker, and I will get back to you on that matter. Okay, moving right along to item nine, school and community reports.
I'm not hearing anything, but is that for the, is that for me?
Sorry, everyone did-
Yeah, we haven't been able to hear anyone but the speakers basically the whole time.
Will, can you hear me?
Yeah, you, you- Yes, I can hear you, Lisa. RCTSD boardroom is unmuted, but no volume's coming out. RCSD boardroom is unmuted, but no volume's coming out.
So the boardroom pops up when the microphones are working and it moves into the spotlight. So that's how we can tell that it's working. But for some of the microphones, the boardroom doesn't pop up into the middle of the room. So my, my guess is that Will will say he can hear me talking right now. Because I saw it pop into the Zoom, but not all the microphones seem to be doing that.
Yeah, I've, we've only been able to hear Maria and Elisa, but there'll be long breaks where we can't. We did hear the speakers.
Did you hear Wendy earlier?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Last time we were able to hear her.
Okay.
All right, Nathan. Will, can you hear now? Okay, perfect. So Nathan is our auditor and Nathan is here to give you a summary report. You each received a copy of the, of the audit. So Nathan, I'm going to turn it over to you. And then if any of the board members have any questions, they're feel, they are free to ask you them. Okay?
Yes, thank you very much. And I have a quick presentation. Do you mind if I just put that on the screen?
So you'd like to share the screen? Is that right?
Yeah, is that okay? I think I can. As long as it's okay with. Oh, okay.
There you go.
Okay. This won't take too long. Thank you. My name is Nathan Edelman with ID Bailey. And I am the independent external auditor. We're going to talk about the results of the audit. I actually met, I think it was last week with the audit committee trustees, McCoby and Wells. And we went into the audit results in much more detail. So you're going to receive the executive summary, kind of the important highlights of the audit. First of all, I'm going to say audit referring to the district's financial statements as well as the separate measure T bond fund financial statements. There's a few things that we do when we, when we say audits, just to define them. One, it's to ensure that those financial statements, the districts as well as the bond funds. And I am referring to the fiscal year end, June 30, 2021. But it's to ensure that those financial statements comply with the audit comply with the accounting standards for governmental entities. We also look at, and we have an audit opinion about federal and state grant compliance, which isn't about debits and credits. It's is the district using restricted funds consistent with the purpose of those bonds? And similar with that, Prop 39 requires what's called a performance audit regarding the measure T bond fund, which is, you know, is the district using those bond dollars consistent with restrictions, the capital restrictions, consistent with the bond project listing? And then if there's internal control deficiencies that are identified as, and you know, we say things need to be done differently for the financial statements to be correct or for compliance to be, I guess, correct. Those would also be reported out as part of the audit. So our responsibility is just the messenger. We ask questions, we look at documents and we report back. But the district, those responsible for financial reporting, those responsible for compliance or with from bond fund compliance, folks within the district are responsible for ensuring that these things are good, ensuring that the financial statements are correct and that the compliance, that the things are used appropriately. Super high level overview of the timeline, just some context that the audit is not, it's not, it's not a two week process where we come in and bounce out. And there's a, it kind of goes on at different stages throughout the year from planning and sitting down at different times. But there's a, there's a lot that goes into it over, really over the course of maybe not a full 12 months, but over, over a long period of time. So with, with all that, the results of applying all these procedures boil down to a few things. There is an opinion on the financial statements separately for the district's financial statements as well as measure T, which is cropped out from the district report. And, and with, within the, I guess, the actual PDF document, there's some pages that has the firm's header and there's lots of paragraphs in there. But it boils down to what's on the screen, which is that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the district. And you could say the exact same thing, fairly stated financial position of measure T. With respect to the bond performance audit, you know, is the district using those bond funds consistent with the bond project listing? The district expended the 2015 measured T funds only for specific projects as approved by voters. Similarly, with respect to state and federal compliance, you know, district complied in all material respects. So really, the things that you see on the screen represent what we would call unmodified or clean audit opinion. As in, financial statements are fairly stated. They comply with the accounting rules. And there were no exceptions identified with respect to federal state compliance or with respect to the measure T bond fund. Those were all used for compatible, compatible expenses. This is a one page snapshot, super high level. It shows a three year historical trend of the operations results. I guess revenues of the general fund as well as expenditures on the general fund. And, and I don't know if you can see the mouse, but probably the thing that I would, I would look at kind of towards the bottom middle, but available reserves as a percentage of total ALCO. That shows the available reserves as of the end of each of those fiscal periods in relation to general fund expenditures, expenditures for the year. And there, and you can see kind of at the end of 2021, there is quite a big increase from that 2020 percentage to the 2021 percentage. And I don't remember offhand exactly what's the state minimum requirement, but I think it's 3%. It's a little deceptive here because just like all of the other school districts, there's a lot of one time COVID related federal grants that are rolling through for the year. So you do see higher percentages. But nonetheless, that is a healthy number. And it's kind of, if I were to have one thing throughout the entire report, I would, I would look at that. But it's so really with that, I'm going to stop sharing. That is basically it. As I said, I did sit down with the audit committee and we had a much more in-depth discussion. If I, if anyone really has questions, anything that I can highlight, I'm happy to try and field those respond as best I can.
So does anyone have any questions or comments?
Yes, I'll just add that Mike and I did have the opportunity to meet with Nathan, as he said, and go through the report a little more closely. And had an opportunity also without staff there to have a private conversation, which is, I think, an important part of the program as well. And as Nathan said, the audit was a very clean audit, which is what you want to see. So in other words, you know, I won't reiterate everything that Nathan said, but I think it is important to know that Mike and I did meet, you know, separately with Nathan. And then we did have Dr. Baker and Priscilla come in as well and kind of just went through some, some of the various things. So it looked good to us. I don't know, Mike, if you want to add anything.
No, I think, you know, it's just a testament to a well-run bond program and, you know, well-run finance office. So appreciate all the work that they're doing.
Yeah, yeah, actually, that is one good point because we did specifically want to ask about the bond. Because of course, we're coming to the close of the bond. And the good news is there again, the money has been spent properly. And they could document that through the audit. So that, that was good to see.
Yeah, yeah, actually, the, you know, we see a lot of these bond programs where it's much more complicated. This one is pretty straightforward. We can ask questions, we get responses. It's sounds kind of boring that there's nothing to report back, but that's kind of how audits, I guess, should be. If you have an exciting audit where there's a lot of attention, that just means that there's some reason why. And unfortunately, maybe, I don't, I don't know, that's not the case here. This one is, it's pretty straightforward. And there hasn't been any issues for actually all the years that I can remember. So, so positive reflection of the district, if anything.
Nathan, thank you so much for all your hard work and working with our staff and doing it vis a vis virtually. Because I know in the past, you've been here with us and with staff in the business office, staff in HR, staff in my office to make sure that you had all the documents that you needed. So thanks for the thorough report and also doing it virtually for year number two, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you.
And thank you. I'm very happy to hear that it was a boring audit. That means things are working well. So thank you very much and thank you to our staff and our members of the committee. I know it takes a little bit of time and understanding, but the audits are very important. So thank you, everybody. Moving on to item 10, the bond program consent items. Can I have a motion to move all those items?
Second.
Hey, that was Cecilia and Michael in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don. There is no bond action program. So moving on to item 12.1, discussion of moving the use of masks in schools from required to strongly recommended.
Yeah, this one's working because the light's on. All right, perfect. Thanks, guys. It is working. Can you hear it out there? All right, great. So good evening, everyone, and welcome. Before I start, I just want to say, you know, it's great being here in the United States, even though we're dealing with masking right now. It's not like we're in another country that is being bombed. I just saw where a school and nursery, I just couldn't believe it. So a blessing that we are here and not participating in any of those actions that are taking place. We're so fortunate. So let's start. Here's something that's a bit exciting, I would say, after two, it's been two years. It's been two years since we've been in this pandemic. And I want to give a little update on masking and what is taking place. Not only what I would like to take place in our district, but what is happening throughout the county of San Mateo. All right, next slide, Wendy. So let's go with these updates. So as you've all heard on social media, on new, on the newscast and so forth, cases and hospitalizations continue to decline across the United States. And as of March 2nd, 2022, the seven day moving average of cases is down by 28% from the previous seven day average, according to the CDC. So you see the image below that represents this. Next slide. So many of you probably heard on February 28th, Dr. Gelli, and he is the California Secretary of Health and Human Resources, announced that because over the prior two weeks COVID cases, the rates dropped by 66% and hospitalizations decreased by 50%. That the mandate for indoor masks in schools would expire on March 11th. And March 11th is on, you know, the evening of Friday, Friday evening. So what does this mean? So what it means for schools in California that March 14th will no longer be and subject to the statewide mask mandate. The state moves to strongly recommend that masks be worn in schools. Cal OSHA, which provides guidance for adult workers in schools, also updated its guidance, which means that no longer requires, but strongly again recommends for masks to be worn by unvaccinated workers indoors. This includes our teachers, our staff, contractors who are working with us in the classroom, contractors who are working outside of the classroom. That's the manner in which we will be moving to. Next slide, please. So the San Mateo County update. So San Mateo County has been working very closely with the superintendents for the last couple of weeks in San Mateo County. And the county health has aligned its guidance with the new California school mask guidelines. And so as we have met with county health and the superintendent of schools for San Mateo, we are aligning ourselves with those guidelines. Once the statewide requirement ends on Friday, March 11th, masks will be strongly recommended in public and private schools in San Mateo County. San Mateo County Office of Education clarified that schools, that the school buses are considered part of the school environment. So what that means, the school mask requirement ends, it will also apply to school buses and vehicles that our children are in that are operated by the Redwood City School District. For example, we have some vans that we have purchased that some of our children ride in, especially if the bus driver is out. And our wonderful Martin Cervantes has to transport some kids. He sometimes does it in the van or other, other people that are working in the maintenance field. Next slide, please. So implementation here in the Redwood City School District. So as you can see, you've seen this dashboard before. It's up on our website and you will see at the bottom, this was when we came back from winter break. And you will see where we were last week at this time. And this is updated every Thursday, late Thursday afternoon. Jorge Quintana does that for us and it's looking really good. It's looking really, really good. I'm very pleased, very pleased. Next slide, please. So the California Department of Public Health has four levels of recommendation. A few weeks ago, before Dr. Gelli, Governor Newsom also talked about these four levels. The first level is, you know, when masks are required, there's no option. But right now, where we are is strongly recommended, where the arrow is pointing. And everyone should wear a mask, but there's no policing of this. So if we have students, if we have teachers, if we have staff members that decide not to wear their mask as of that date, starting when we come back to work on March 14th, that's the manner in which we'll, we'll move. There's another level, which in talking to our county superintendent yesterday, she believes the recommendation of personal choice will be coming sooner than later. I know she is having a presentation, I believe, on Friday with school board members, if I'm not mistaken, with county health also, and she'll be talking about this. And then the last level is optional. That's, there's very little risk. So as, as the word pertains and is defined by itself, it's optional, whether you wear it, don't wear it. Next slide, please. So the state hopes that everyone, everyone will continue to wear a mask in the strongly recommended phase. Although, again, I will want to reinforce to all that there's no policing if students or staff choose not to wear a mask. In Redwood City School District, strongly recommends means wear a mask. However, again, school staff cannot supervise each person's choice. Each person's choice is on their own decision. It's important to remember that while Redwood City has the responsibility to maintain a safe learning and working environment, we also have the responsible, responsibility to create respectful environments for a diversity of individuals to learn and work together. As such, we need to remember that not everyone will make the same choice we make. Regardless of anyone's choice on masking, we need to keep our school places of respect and tolerance. Next slide. So if the state experiences a spike, which we talked a lot about yesterday with the superintendents and Nancy McGee, the county superintendent, CDPH, could then pivot back and require us to go back. the county superintendent, CDPH could then pivot back and require us to go back to wearing masks. That's a possibility. Redwood City could return to indoor masking requirement at any time, should the conditions necessitate us to do so. Next slide. The protocols to continue. This is one thing that we will continue to monitor and continue to exhibit throughout our school district. The filters and the ventilation, I want to give kudos to Martin and his team of maintenance guys who gets out there, make sure that the classroom filters, those individuals that are in each classroom, I think we have two in here tonight, are operating on a regular, on a, on a regular basis. The ventilation system, the, I believe Martin, they're MR13s, if I'm not mistaken, that those filters are definitely changed on a regular basis. And if, whoops. Thank you. And, and if isolation and quarantining needs to take place, it will occur. And that if staff member, teacher, child tests positive, then there's going to still be the requirement of a negative test to return to school or work. We'll follow the guidelines. Next slide. And so now as a discussion, if you have any questions for me. The protocols are really in place. We have all the PPE in place, teachers, staff members. If you want the KN95, we do have them. If you want the N95, we do have them. We still have the, all the gel and so forth for washing our hands. We have masks available for our students also, if masks are needed. And we just received information and we just gave the numbers today. So we will be giving each student and each staff member, teacher, staff member who wants one of those home kits for spring break to go ahead and we'll pass those out again. So they're being delivered and I think they'll be in Wendy's office, my office, Shannon's, Shannon's office until we come out to the school site. They probably list his office too. So we are prepared to continue to adhere to the guidelines, continue to adhere to the protocols and continue to move forward. This is really so, it's an amazing feeling compared to where we were two years ago, when I was saying to people in the, in the district office, to staff and to teachers, to parents, oh, we're going to come back after spring break, two years ago. Didn't happen. So it's great. It's great that we're moving in this direction. Very happy that we also live in an area where the cases and the hospitalizations are very low. And just to remind everybody, if you're not, get vaccinated, get boosted. Wear your, wear your face mask, you know, if you strongly feel that you have to do it, do it. If you're sick and you're feeling the least bit of being uncomfortable, stay at home. And if you feel that you not able to find a COVID test, one of the antigen tests, and you need one, be sure and call the district office to see if we can help you out. Questions?
Do we have any comments or questions?
There's a speaker's card.
Go ahead and.
Can you hear me now? Okay. All right. Fantastic. Great. My name is Erin Washburn. I'm a teacher in the Redwood City School District. I'm a middle school music teacher. I'm also the president of the Redwood City Teachers Association. And thank you for that presentation, Dr. Baker. And hello, school boards. First time I've been here. It's a pleasure to be here and actually talking to you in person. And you did answer my question. I was, I did have a question after your presentation, Dr. Baker. When you talked about the protocols that would still be offering, I didn't see on the presentation that you would still be offering N95 masks to workers, but you would still be doing, the district would still be providing those. So that's, that's great. But this is just here, this is what I need to say. So the California Department of Public Health, it states right now that masks are strongly recommended for all persons regardless of vaccine status in indoor public settings and businesses. That's, that's where, where it's moving. That's what the strong recommendation is, that it's strongly recommended for all persons. The mandate is not going to be lifted on public transportation. It's not going to be lifted in emergency cooling and heating centers. It's not going to be lifted in healthcare settings, corrections facilities. You still have to wear a mask in homeless shelters. You still have to wear a mask in long-term care settings and adult and senior care facilities. So masks are still going to be required in all of those places. We also have a lot of students in our district who are under five years old, who are unable to get vaccinated. And then we have many students and teachers and educational assistants and administrators that go home every night to an immunocompromised family member. Further, as an epidemiologist, flute player friend of mine pointed out, that we don't know what the long-term effects of COVID are. So if you've managed to dodge it so far, which I have not, you don't want to get it. You still don't want to get this virus because we don't know what the long-term effects are. So it's for these public health reasons. It's understandable that many teachers would prefer the mask mandate stay in place, right? They, they want to continue it at school because our personal choices can and do impact each other. But then there's about half of the teachers in the district that I heard from that are tired of wearing masks. They're tired of asking kids to talk louder so that they can be heard through their masks. I personally would love to wear glasses again in public because now I can't, I can't because they get fogged up. And it's just really great to be able to see everybody's faces. So I understand that perspective as well. Right now, the Redwood City Teachers Association has not come to a consensus. So this is my personal opinion. Okay, so that's what I'm about to tell you right now. Based on the language, nowhere in the new language does it say anything about personal choice. Right now, it says that masks are strong, or it, it will move to masks are strongly recommended for all persons regardless of vaccine status in indoor public settings and business. So it looks, I mean, I think we have a decision that we could make. Do we want to follow the CDPH's recommendation to wear masks indoors? Or do we want to go the way of it's your personal choice to do this, which we're not actually there yet as far as the CDPH is concerned. We are not to that level yet. As a district, I think it's important that we're united on this. Because we can't have some teachers committed to public health, the public health guidelines, and other teachers who aren't. Because if you've ever worked at a school where you've got one teacher that follows the rules to the T and another teacher who doesn't follow those rules, that creates culture problems at the school, right? Just, and, and it, it doesn't work out. If a teacher's, so one teacher's letting things slide, one teacher's making sure that these are the rules and they're followed, doesn't work. Parents, works that way with parents too. If one parent's like, these are the rules, we're going to follow them and the other parent lets us. It just doesn't work when it's coming from two different directions. Students will be faced with a daily decision based on peer pressure from their classmates, based on their, the personal choices of their teachers and the demands of their parents. And all of those things could be different. So every day a kid is going to have to make that, okay, am I going to wear my mask today? And who do I listen to, you know? So it just, it's going to create a disharmony among students and among staff members. It'll have negative effects on school climate and culture. And I think it's the responsibility of this board, this board to make it clear and simple for our school communities. It is my personal suggestion that we continue to require masks indoors until the California Department of Public Health changes its language to reflect that it's time for personal choice. Thank you very much.
Do we have any more speakers? Okay, so do we have any comments or questions?
So thank you very much, Erin, for your comments. And actually, some of the things that you brought up were very much in line with what I had a conversation with Dr. Baker and then Mike Wells, the three of us meet, met. And so I asked kind of the same questions and I think what's frustrating for school boards all across California once again is that although the guidance is clear in terms of what it's saying, it really is moving away from the requirement. So we've had a requirement. And if you don't follow a requirement, then we've actually assisted students off campus. Teachers and staff could have disciplinary action associated with it. And so the issue that we have is if we go with required, with required in that mode, we're actually not really following the guidance that's being given to us by the governor and the California Department of Health. And I even asked, could we have more direction from our own county health department? So at least within San Mateo County, we're consistent. And the consistency that we're getting is to follow what the CD, the California Department of Health is saying, which is strongly recommended. Which I agree with you, I think strongly recommended means that it's strongly recommended. Because I asked that very question, well, what happens if we have a staff person who doesn't follow the strongly recommended rule? Which to me means that it's, you know, I think what Dr. Baker is saying is that we want to, you know, at this point, what the rest of San Mateo County is doing and many school districts are doing is they're, they're not going to be policing it. But, but I do agree, I think maybe there's a way for us as we give guidance is that it's not in the, you know, the message is strongly recommended, but we're not going to police, I guess. But, but take out the personal choice. I, I don't know. I mean, it's hard because, you know, you look at the guidance and it's.
Look at those four levels. There's, there's a time there when it is.
I mean, here's my feeling is, you know, it's, it's the health people that ought to be telling us what to do. And I, and I'm frankly, I'm tired of this. The last, you know, I'm frustrated because the last couple of years, school districts have been asked to become health departments. We've been asked to become health experts. That is not the, that's not the natural expertise of our educators, educator, you know, we do have, we, we're fortunate. We do have some educators that happen to have that background, but that's not a requirement of being a superintendent or a principal or a teacher or, you know. And so it is frustrating. And actually, the California School Boards Association lobbied heavily to basically be very clear, like to either strongly recommend it as it's required or you don't, but you know, once again, here we are. And they, they're basically saying it's local control and you're right, we could require it. I am concerned that if we do that, you know, different school districts in San Mateo County are doing different things. We already saw, you know, in the paper when San Francisco, at first they were saying they're going to require it. And then all of a sudden they got a lot of pushback from different, both workers and parents and students. So I don't know, personally, I guess the bottom line is, although I'm uncomfortable with saying strongly recommended, but then having real no consequences if you don't follow that, which I think is sort of what you're, you know, you were saying. I, I, you know, in the final conversation that we had, it sort of came, well, we strongly recommend, but we're not going to police. So. Yeah. And, and I think the good news on all of this is that at least Superintendent Nancy McGee and I think a few others in the county believed that we could be moving pretty quickly to the next one, because actually our numbers are really low. If you look at our own numbers in our school district, they are really low right now, which is really good. I mean, so. I'll stop.
Hey, anyone else?
That was, that was well said. Thank you. And I think it shows some of the ambivalence that, that's here. I mean, at this point, I think, you know, as we've done so many times in the past, I think following the health professionals and what they're telling us to do is, you know, I, I just, I can't find a reason for what would need to change to be able to say, we want to do something different until this criteria is met. Erin, thank you. You actually brought a very good one in where it could be when they make the personal choice. That, that could be a metric that we could, we could look at. But aside from that, it's, we have very low case rate. We live in a very fortunate county. The vaccination rates are high. I think, you know, our sub 12-year-olds could be higher. Last I looked, they were around 60% fully completed. So I hope that people are pushing in that direction with, with their kids. But otherwise, we have very high and very low case rate and hospitalization rate that I struggle to say if this is the guidance that we're being given from the state, from the county, to then decide that you know, we, we should go in a different direction for that. And that's, that's kind of how I looked at the evidence that, you know, all of the information that we've gotten in the last couple of weeks about this. I do want to, you know, it's been reiterated before, but it is strongly recommended to continue to wear masks indoors. And we have to be very aware that there will be a variety of, of, of choices being made, maybe not initially, but over the next several weeks. And particularly as we move to personal choice. And Dr. Baker, you touched on this, but it's really important that we normalize the, you, you know, the variety of approaches that students and staff are going to, going to take as these restrictions change. Look, it's, it's hard. We're shifting from two years of real pandemic to really moving towards endemic. And it's going to feel uncomfortable making those changes. And we just need to make sure that we're supportive, that it is, that we normalize the variety of choices that people will, when the personal choice comes in and we move from strongly recommended to personal choice, that, that, that gets normalized so that students and staff that want to wear masks are, you know, the same as students and staff that choose not to without the peer pressure that we were alluded to on the, on the platform, on a, you know, on the school site.
Thanks, Mike, for the mic. I, I don't want to repeat everything that's already been said because I think you guys made the points that I was going to make already. I, you know, I think it's been really important to us to follow the guidance of the health professionals this last two years. And as a school board, we were asking for that, you know, early on, when we were being asked to make those decisions, we said, no, we aren't the health professionals. We need to follow the guidance from the health professionals. So I am comfortable following the guidance from the CDPH. And I'm very hopeful that our district will continue to wear their masks because we know that strongly recommended for a reason. And that said, and Mike, you brought this up too, I, I really hope that moving forward, we will see people being tolerant and respectful of everybody's choices because we're not all going to make the same choices. And it's really important in our district that, you know, for staff or students who are choosing something different than you might choose, that you respect that. And yeah, just make this a safe place. I don't think I had anything additional to add to that. I don't think I had anything additional to add to that.
Um, and then for me, um, I totally understand that it's strongly recommended, being that I had a family member almost died when this COVID first started. It hits home very, very close, you know, it hits very close to home. And I know that we have to let go of the fear. Honestly, I will choose to at least wear my mask for another two to three weeks, even after spring break. I get what the teachers are saying, and perhaps, or some of the teachers. My only thing is, when we are in a classroom, there's more than just enough, I mean, more than just a few people, right? We go out to dinner, I've taken my mask out when I go out to dinner. For the most part, I hang out with people that are vaccinated. I, I do agree with the strongly recommended guideline, guy, guy, line, guidance, because we have followed it all this time. My only concern is when we talked about public transportation, or masks and public transportation. Dr. Baker, when you were speaking about schools and what they're doing, you did mention our students would not be wearing masks in our buses or our vans. And I'm just wondering...
It, it is the same guidance, it's the same guidance that's recommended.
And, and you mean strongly recommended? But then, did I misunderstand that when Erin was speaking, if it's public transportation, you still wear your mask? Or is that still strongly...
That's in general, public transportation. Where our students are not, and the students that ride the school bus or our van, if that's not public transportation, that's the transportation of the school district, so it's a different piece. For example, if you're gonna ride Samtrans, or you're gonna ride Caltrain, that's public transportation, you should be wearing your mask.
So again, I mean, I do agree with the strongly recommendation. For the most part, again, people are vaccinated. They do say strongly recommended for the unvaccinated people to wear a mask. Obviously, we're not gonna be pointing fingers or policing. Again, I think it would be eventually a people's choice. And then hopefully, my, my only, a little bit of a concern is, even with the guidelines, they do also say, if the state experiences another spike, we could pivot it back. And obviously, we don't know, right? And it's happened twice. So that would be the only thing that we're kind of taking that risk. But at the same time, I know that we kind of need to move forward. I mean, I remember when Dr. Baker talked to us about coming back to the classroom, you know, and it was scary, because we really didn't know what it entail. And so, um, I, I, again, I mean, I guess I would just have to say that, yes. I mean, I do agree with the strongly recommendation. Again, it is a little bit of a fear for me on a personal level, and I'm sure that we do have a lot of, maybe parents that would continue to feel this way. But then at the same time, as, you know, life goes on. That's it.
And I agree with all of you. I think that we should follow the recommendation. I think, I thank Erin for coming this evening. I think, like she said, there are some people that are pro, some that are against, and I don't think we're going to get to agreement. So therefore, I think we must follow the recommendation. But I do have a couple of questions, John. There was a form the teachers filled out to get their N95 masks. Is that gonna continue?
Yeah, that all continues.
And are they...
Every, Wendy's Thursday or Friday?
The deliveries are between Thursday and Friday for the, for the next week.
Okay, and does, and does that include the preschools?
Everybody.
Every single employee, contractor, substitute.
District office, all of us.
Order, order what they need.
My fault. I was believing we were in person more than we are. Sorry about that. Yes, the order form, which is electronic, is available to all employees. Every single employee, classified, certified, management, substitutes, contractors, on our campuses. And of course, custodians also have them on site. But Martin Cervantes and his crew review the order form and then make the deliveries in anticipation for the next week, so they're ready to go prior to the week starting.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure, because you might wanna check, I got a report that the Hoover preschools have been waiting for them, and they haven't been delivered. So if you could check on that, I just wanna make sure that they are available to our staff. And, um, for those of you that don't know, I work in a library, and we were given that option of, you know, you can wear it if you want, you don't have to. But I must tell you that most of the customers that come in are wearing their mask. The staff, if we're out in the public, most of us will wear our masks. If they're in the separate office, they'll take them off. But all of us are still pretty cautious. So I think that seeing that gives me hope that people will continue. But there are a couple who just, you know, can't wear them for health reasons or whatever. And I think it's freeing for them to be able to come in without having somebody saying, hey, where's your mask? And for me personally, like the teachers, I'm happy not to have to say, excuse me, can I offer you a mask? You know, so, um, I think that if we continue to make the equipment available to everybody that needs it, and again, to be tolerant of one another, because it's not only the unvaccinated who don't, you know, who may need to wear a mask or don't want to wear it. It's just a personal choice that they're making at this point, even though it's strongly recommended. And again, I think that people will continue to wear them, as Cecilia mentioned. It's still scary. Some of us, you know, as Erin said, have family members who are at risk at home. And we certainly don't wanna take it home with us. So with that, uh, this is just a discussion item, right?
Right, so we will move forward. I have, we have a meeting with the principals tomorrow. And Liz and her Department of Staff Development have put together some lessons and some guidance for teachers, and talking to students, and talking to parents. And we'll go over that with the principals tomorrow. So this to exhibit respect and tolerance for one's decision, and not to provide any negative occasions or feedback for whatever decision an adult or a child makes.
And are we also gonna have the masks available for the children?
Yes, they are available for the children. Yep.
Wanna make sure those that want it should have it.
We have so much.
Let's put them out at the site.
We are totally, and, and the, and the testing still continues also. So just that everyone is aware of that, we have that till the end of the school year.
Okay, moving right along, items 13, the consent items. Can I have a motion to move all those items?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The action items, 14.1, recommendation regarding adoption of Resolution 27, direct reduction or elimination of certified services for fiscal year 2021 to 2022.
Thank you. The next several action items brought forward to you tonight all address the ed code that requires notification to employees by March 15th. So it's a requirement for the district to do so. And that March 15th deadline is difficult, because we are still in the midst of finalizing our budgets for next year. So some of the items brought forward will, may very well be reinstated once funding is secured. For example, Measure U, PTO funding, and other soft money, so to speak, or categorical monies. So I wanted to just make that point for the, the subsequent board memos that are before you. In this particular one, there is a list of the recommended, it's called a particular kind of service. And within that, I did wanna point out, we also have general education teachers that are noted there, 10. It doesn't affect any person, but rather, as we experience declining enrollment, and we look at our class sizes, which we'd like to stay intact, but we are reducing a little bit here and there, going from 260 general ed teachers to 250 estimated for 22, 23.
Do we have any comments or questions on this item? Can I have a motion to move it?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
14.2, recommendation regarding adoption of Resolution 28, release and reassignment of certified administrators.
Are there any questions?
Okay, can I have a motion to move this item?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
14.3, recommendation regarding of adoption of Resolution 29, reduction of certain classified service for fiscal year 2021, 2022. Any questions or comments on this one? Can I have a motion to move this item?
Yeah, I actually be, just a comment. I don't, I don't know, Wendy, if you mentioned this, but I, I did wanna just bring to everyone's attention, you know, we had a conversation about it, but that this is, the, some of the classified positions may be coming sooner than they have before, because of the new, right, isn't this because of the law now for the March 15th? So I don't know, Wendy, if you just wanna speak, did you already speak to that?
I can add more detail.
But I think it's important, because I think for some people, they may have not seen, they're sort of used to the, you know, the March 15th kind of notices that we do for certified. But this is new, and this is gonna add, again, all of this does not align with our budgeting process. So, you know, it's a little bit crazy-making, because we don't even know our budget, and we don't have no monies, and we're having to sort of plan for that in the most conservative approach at this point. And then many of these people, it's positions and not people, and so the people will still stay with us. But anyway, I think it's important for people to understand that.
Sure, I'd be happy to speak to that. So yes, it is true, starting this year, our typical window of analyzing classified positions occurs in April, late April, actually 60 days prior to the end of the school year, their work year. However, the state did change that for this time period. And so the certified particular kinds of service layoffs and classified align for March 15. So that is brand new. And once again, we're still in this budgetary timeline that allows for decisions to be made early, and without, in some cases, all of the final information, of course, in place. So with layoffs, what occurs is that when individuals are in positions, there's already meetings scheduled for tomorrow with Human Resources to address those individuals affected, but we do have vacancies. So it's called bumping. So individuals that have rights are bumped into other positions and so forth, and offered vacancies with absolutely the intention to keep individuals in our district. So that is planned actually for tomorrow already, assuming this moves forward.
Thank you, I just think it's important for the public to understand that, because it might be kind of new, so thanks. So I'll go ahead and move the item.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 14.4, recommendation regarding approval of release of temporary teachers. Any comments or questions on this item? No, can I have a motion to move the item?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
14.5, recommendation regarding approval of personnel changes for 2021, 2022. Any comments or questions on the item? Can I have a motion to move it?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, down to 14.9, recommendation regarding approval of agreement between Redwood City School District and Illuminate Educational Services for the EduClima software license.
Ms. Wolf will give you some information about this, because it, does that work?
Looks good? Okay.
Yeah.
So I'd like to apologize to our entire school community for the lack of access to data this year. We made a poor mis, poor judgment this summer in choosing our new data service. We selected a data service that was aligned with Power School, and we figured that would be a seamless representation of data, that the data would move back and forth very easily, that the setup would take no time at all. Months later, we are still at the same place that we were where we started. And we think that one of the things that was happening is that Power School had acquired a new company, and none of the bugs were out of the system yet. And so, since we're at the same place we were that we were back in June or July when we made this choice, we decided to terminate our agreement with them and start with another organization, Illuminate, which is very well-known in most of our districts use Illuminate. And we did have a question about, do we get any of our money back? And they have given us some of our contract funding back, but it needs to be applied to a Power School product. So maybe we can use it for the Power School Management Information System that we use or something, because we're not interested in some of their ancillary products for a while. Anyway, so we want to apologize for not having access to data, because we want to be a data-driven organization. And we've had the good fortune of having a data coordinator who has been able to provide information for us. And many of you have seen that at the meetings that you've been attending. But we wanted to make it seamless, so that the schools can just touch a button, and the dashboard of our data appears. And we feel confident that with this, with EduClima through Illuminate, we'll be able to have that within a period of a couple of months. So that's why we're bringing this forward tonight.
Any additional comments or questions? No, can I have a motion to move the item?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
14.10, recommendation regarding adoption of Resolution 30, authorizing electronic meetings of the Board of Trustees during the state of emergency pursuant to Government Code, Section 54953E.
We bring this to you each month, in case we need to pivot in some fashion. So here it is again. And then in case any of you need to attend a meeting from your business trip, or you have to go somewhere, you can attend a meeting virtually and not have to put the agenda outside your hotel door.
Hey, can I have a motion to move this item?
So moved.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to 15.1, report from board members. Let's start with Janet.
Um, let's see, I attended a wellness committee meeting, and Katrina Redd is amazing. That was a great meeting. Um, John and I were at the Redwood City Chamber Education Committee meeting last week, I believe. And I just wanted to make a note that there was a presentation from Belmont Redwood Shore School District on their upcoming parcel tax renewal. At that point, the board hadn't voted on it yet, but they did vote to put it on the ballot the following day, I think. And so the Education Committee did vote in favor of supporting the parcel tax. Um, we had a BON team meeting, and I attended the North Star Forward meeting.
Cecilia?
And for me, I attended the Superintendent Advisory Committee, the Child Nutrition Services Committee, and the North Star Forward Committee.
Mike?
Janet already mentioned the BON team meeting. Earlier, we mentioned that we had our audit exit meeting, which we obviously saw the audit for. And then there was the MTSS, the DLT team, that last week.
Lisa?
So today, I went to the Safe Routes to Schools meeting, and...
So today I went to the Safe Routes to Schools meeting and lot happening there, a lot happening there. We heard some updates from different groups and did I write down? Maybe I didn't write it down. Oh, anyway. We, we did, yeah, I guess I didn't write down the number in the end. We, we did get an update from Afelda, who works in the community school program. And it was around the bus passes that have gone out. And I want to say there was, you know, like 540 or 560, I guess I didn't write it down. And mostly middle school students. And we're still waiting to kind of get some reports and get some data on how they're using it and how's it going and all that. One of the things that some of us on the committee are going to do, including a representative from the high school district, and I volunteered. And once we have the date set, we'll let all of you know, if anyone's interested, we're going to ride the bus and kind of try to experience what some of our students experience. One of the main bus routes that goes through Redwood City that some of our students take is the one that comes down Jefferson and then on Alameda, it, it takes a right. I mean, on, on Jefferson, it takes a right on Alameda and then goes around and eventually makes its way to Sequoia Station. So we're going to do that one morning and we'll report back. But if anyone wants to join us, I'll let you know when that is. Because I, I think it, you know, I'm sort of looking forward to it. I haven't been on the bus that we're encouraging our students to ride. So we'll try that out. And then we did hear on some of the activities in the city, including they're going to be doing some projects around Henry Ford to try out some different calming measures. So I did bring it, Martin was on the call and I did bring up, make sure that our principal and Martin knows, you know, what's going to happen and when and all that. So there's no surprises. And they did say that they would put a flyer together for Peach Jar and send that out and everything. And then Martin is also on the Vision Zero Task Force that is doing work in Redwood City. So I was really happy to hear that we do have a Redwood City School District representative on that. And they will be focusing not only Vision Zero, you know, basically to have zero deaths around car traffic and stuff for pets and bikes, and they will be looking at the school. So that's good news. And then there's going to be an Earth Day activity. Most likely sponsored, well, co-sponsored, but with Sam Trans at the Sequoia Station to kind of clean it up again around the bus area to make it nicer for students and others who are getting off the bus there. And so more information on that as well. And then oh, I did participate in a, in a meeting with Congresswoman Jackie Speer. And this was around climate change. There was a group and they asked some different representatives, including a school board representative to speak. So I had a little video and anyway, they watched that. And it does sound like in her last year, she's going to try to do some more to support climate resiliency with schools and other, you know, climate action in general. And then I think the other things we already talked about.
Thank you, Lisa. I also attended the CNS meeting and I'm very happy to say that thanks to Wendy and her staff, our staffing in that department is looking better. I think we have two vacancies. And also, we are bringing back some of those wonderful scratch cooking and I think also letting people know about the food, fresh foods and vegetables that we had before. So you should be seeing some of that on social media as well.
Okay.
And
A lot of the items have been mentioned. Liz and I attended a meeting at Stanford last week on Friday with our collaborative group, which involves ourselves and of course, the school districts that feed into the Sequoia Union High School District. And so we got to learn about the math pathways and how our students are performing and how that students are not being placed in remedial math, replaced in regular math classes with support, which is really good, which is a really good shift. And it was really great to see our staff development people there because Kendall Klein, who works very closely with our teachers in the arena of mathematics, had some really good questions for the Stanford researchers and how to look at the data and how it should be done differently, which they're taking into consideration. So that was on Friday. I then, let's see, Sequoia High School District, Sequoia Union High School District is working very closely with the Community College in Canata and then also with San Mateo and then San Francisco State and Cal State East Bay, where they're trying to have a career for their high school students to also take college coursework and it will apply to when they determine if they're going to state college, university or a community college. But they want to bring it down to like eighth graders. So it was, it was something that that a meeting I went to to learn about. And for our eighth graders, it would be maybe a in the area of importance of why you should open up your mind to think of other pathways for you when you're in high school that you could still accomplish prior to going to university, state college or community college. And where this could be done on a weekend, it could be done after school, it would be professors along with teachers. So I said, yeah, I, I'd be interested to learn more about it and see how we can really bring this to our eighth graders and see if it would be of any interest for any of them to attend. It would not be taken away from what they're, you know, attending on a regular daily basis. But maybe it's a weekend course. Maybe it's an after-school course and it would be taught by the professor and also by a high school teacher. So we'll see, we'll, we'll see what comes of it. See what comes of it. And then I went to RCF last night. Yeah, last night, they're, you know, coming together. They're still looking for their executive director. They have not found one yet. So they're still, they're still looking. And then they're planning some type of spring activity, but it's real different. It's not a large activity, but it's going to be hosts by different board members and in their homes for a fundraiser. So more to come on that.
Moving on to 16.1, Sumitail County Office of Educational Review of R C S D First Interim Financial Report for Fiscal Year 2021, 2022. Any comments or questions on that? Worked correspondence. I did, we did received an email from the employees, which was read this evening and I will be replying. Just been a little busy, but I do read everything. Also some from some parents. Do you guys have any others? No? Okay. 18.1, possible other business or suggested items for future agendas? None? Okay. 19.1, changes to the board agenda schedule. None? Okay. And before we adjourn, I would like to say, say thank you to our tech employees who are here with us this evening. I know things, you know, got a little bit of hiccups here this evening, but thank you for being here and helping us out as we move into this hybrid model of meetings. We appreciate you being here and appreciate all the work you do for us. And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.